Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the Board of Selectmen meeting for the Town of Hingham for Thursday, September 5th. The agenda for this evening is we have some minutes to approve. We'll hear a report from the group that has been looking at the longstanding issue of a light and other traffic matters relative to Cushing Main and South Pleasant Street. We'll have a discussion on the Plymouth County Government. Some of you may have seen an article in the Hingham Journal today on that subject. We'll then start for the new year our discussion on current goals and objectives and then proceed with a study looking at what are we going to do in South Hingham with the leadership of the gentleman to my left, Paul Healy. I'll have some appointments to make and then Selectmen and Town Administrator reports. And then we will adjourn to executive session to get an update on negotiations with both the police and Department of Public Works and how that fits in with our overall labor strategy. So with that, let us get started. And has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes for August the 7th?
I have.
Any corrections, modifications?
Although I would like to note that I think Sharon does a great job capturing the minutes accurately and succinctly.
She does a nice job. I've got a couple changes that she already made.
Good. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved to approve the minutes of August 7, 2013.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye. Before we move on, there was a statement that I put into the August 7 minutes because it was an instructional item for me that really referred back to the June 27th. Remember the task you assigned me? I'd like to go ahead and get that in this meeting's minutes.
Tonight?
Yes. If it would be okay?
Sure, we'll do it at Selectmen Reports, is that okay?
Okay. Let me not forget it. That's going to be, what, an hour away?
We're going to move through quick, I promise. We're going to try anyway. Okay. Mr. Costello, if you would be so kind to come forth.
Seeing that it's myself and two other members of the committee, would it be okay if I pull one more chair up there?
Absolutely. Please, by all means. As long as, as a union guy, you don't charge me double time for it, that's all. Would you be so kind, Jim, to introduce yourself and the other members for the folks at home? Thank you.
This is Dana Merk and Dick Cook, two members of the committee. Jim T. is not here, I thought he was going to be here. And our fifth member is now on the Board of Selectmen, Paul Healy.
You have to stay, Paul.
Gone but not forgotten.
Kind of what I would like to do is kind of walk through this a little bit, how we, you know, you've got the report. I've given a copy of the report to the Chief of Police and members of the Traffic Committee. It was a good exercise. We met five times. We came up with the report. And I'm sure Dana will agree with me, it would be appropriate to recognize Dick Cook as the author of the draft in the final report. It's, if I could have dreamed up a way to do a report, I couldn't have done a better job dreaming it up. But Dick is a professional and we in the town, we on the committee benefited from his knowledge, understanding, experience. And I think it, the report and recommendations contain elements that will help future discussions relative to this, as we described it, difficult intersection. Also, I'd like to make a comment on the charge of the Board of Selectmen. That was very helpful. It focused the committee on what the intent of the town, what the town want to accomplish from the committee. And the discipline of the members of the committee to stay on target was very helpful. Let me just address the three different charges. First charge is whether the study conducted by CNC in 2010 and accepted by the Traffic Committee is still what the town should rely on. That's probably, you know, one of the most important, but answering that question comes after some discussion. The second charge was whether there is, whether there are alternatives to signalization that should be considered. And I'll address that now. We had three suggestions from townspeople who took the time to communicate in writing. The first suggestion was from Mr. and Mrs. Fernandez of Main Street. They thought one of the, a solution could be to change Cushing Street to a one-way from Main Street to Ward Street. Committee discussed that issue and what that would, it's a simple approach except it would have severe consequences in some of the other streets that lead off of Main Street. The next suggestion was from Ms. June Friedman. Her suggestion was to make at peak hours no left turns from Cushing Street or South Pleasant Street. And the committee discussed this at length and it became a little bit difficult relative to peak time. I mean, generally speaking, no left turns are consistent. So it, though it was, you know, worthy of discussion, it was, would be difficult to implement, difficult to enforce. The third suggestion had a little bit of light to it, Mr. Thomas Mahoney from Main Street. His suggestion was to take the traffic light at Constitutional Fire Station and activate that and coordinate the signaling from Queen Anne's Corner and handle traffic signals at High Street so you would create more gaps, which was contained in the CNC 2010 report. A little bit complicated and awkward, but that may have some legs sometime in the future. We went through the elements of the charge and going back to the first one. The 2010 CNC report, we believe, was still appropriate now. It's relevant now. And, you know, the various warrant articles that are contained in, still remain the same. One of the key elements that drove the discussion on the committee was safety. I mean, that seemed to be what we all believed was the most important, was the safety. And we looked at the accident reports and they've been, as you see in the report, they've been consistent over the last 10 years. As a matter of fact, in 2012, the first six months of 2012, there were no accidents at the intersection. The second six months, there was six accidents. And the first six months of 2013, there was one accident at the intersection. So in an 18-month period, there were seven accidents. And as you look at the report and recommendation, and let me comment on it so people at home can hear us. The first recommendation was for the foreseeable future, annual accident rate be calculated for the Cushing Main intersection. And the rate, if the rate increases for two or more consecutive years to nine accidents per year, changes to either the traffic control or circulation be considered. The second, and this is important, prior to the installation of a traffic signal at this location or other Main Street intersection, a more comprehensive traffic study be conducted in order to better understand the effective, effect on other Main Streets intersections and potential diversions of Main Street traffic onto alternative secondary roads. Now, I credit Dick with this view of it. I mean, the first element is, of the recommendation was an engineer's view of the world. For the town, for the executive of the town, it, for the first time, there's a circuit breaker. There is a hard number to look at. The second element of the recommendation takes into consideration the variables in the town that somebody that you brought in from the outside that look at the intersection wouldn't have the sense to that. And that, Dick's role as former Planning Board member and a resident of the town for many years. I would say that if I ever had the opportunity to serve on another committee, I would be more than pleased to serve with every single member of the committee. I would serve with them all or one at a time. It was a great experience. And I do want to thank Irma. She was very helpful as a liaison doing the logistics and coordinating various things for the committee. So we really appreciate that and made our task that much easier.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And thank you. So let me just, for the folks at home, the data on accidents, that has been the principal driver in previous discussions. And what I'm hearing you say, it's not consistent. It's up and down as it has been in the past. And I don't know whether you know this, or Paul, as the former Traffic Committee member of mine, relative to other intersections or other dangerous locations in the town, where does this stand?
Well, there, I mean, there's the, there are difficult intersections, whether they're signaled or unsignaled.
Right.
I think this is, this probably, if I remember, the Traffic Committee were probably number seven.
Okay. So there are more difficult locations, which is what the previous analysis, as I recall...
In the discussions that the committee had, I think there was a consensus of the committee, it was more of a inconvenience than a safety issue as it became part of the intense discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Healy?
Well, I'd like to echo Jim's comments, especially with respect to Mr. Cook, because I happen to have the pleasure of sitting with him on the Main, Free and High Study that we did in 2003. And he was the author of that report, which was tweaked by the other members, but he's the principal contributor, let's put it that way. And I do appreciate Dana, your being a resident, perhaps more directly impacted on that intersection than anybody in the room, because you live right near it. It's a, it's an intersection that continues to capture the attention of the townspeople. I keep very few of the documents I've generated in my Planning Board time, but this is my notebook here for Main and Cushing. I've been on this thing for at least 13 years and I sense that I'll continue to be involved with it. The nine accidents per year figure that Jim was talking about, that was the tipping point for the traffic light at Main and High.
Okay.
So there's your reference point.
Okay.
But thanks again, guys, for taking on this thankless task of analyzing it over and over.
Irma?
I just want to echo everything everyone has said. This has been one of the most enjoyable committees to work with. And the knowledge that everybody brought, especially Mr. Cook, is amazing. And having Dana on the committee, who had day-to-day experience with Cushing Street, really brought a lot of things home, because if you're involved in an accident there, that's like a one-time. But Dana's seven by 24, especially where he works from home, so that was very helpful. The other thing for me, I was very surprised at the outcome because of all the material you read in the newspaper, all of the words that were said at town meeting, but the facts. And when you look at the overall scope of this, it's not time for a light. I'm really pleased with the recommendations, that it's not off anybody's radar screen, that it's going to be continually looked at. And should things change, we'll be back looking for money. So thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Irma.
If you could just make a follow-up, I think it's helpful for the residents and the taxpayers to consider the context of the cost for a light here and the other demands that we're encountering, specifically having to deal with the North Street issue and the potential cost there. This is a very delicate balancing act, so when the town gets a recommendation that, an improvement for the convenience sake, that exceeds perhaps a half a million dollars, we have to just judge that very carefully when we have, you know, other issues that our roadway funds could be better spent dealing with.
Could I just add one thing, Mr. Chairman? The report did point out something that I will commend you on along with what everyone else has said, is the idea that a light doesn't necessarily solve the problem, it just pushes it potentially to one of the other neighborhoods along that whole intersection. And you would be faced as a policymaking board with, you know, you put a light here and then, you know, down the street, either way, you have another group of residents that are disaffected because now all their, this traffic has been rerouted to their neighborhood. So unlike Free and High Street, you know, there's different challenges. And each intersection is unique in itself, has to be looked at. And I also appreciate the recommendation that, Paul, you and I have talked about this, at some point in time, we may have to take a larger view of traffic rather than on intersection by intersection, but across either the whole corridor or the whole community. How are people moving through the town? And what are we inadvertently doing that is causing, you know, more traffic or less traffic? How can we affect it positively?
Good point.
Agreed.
It reminds me, I live on Fort Hill Street, and I can tell you when the West Street light changes. Because trying to get out of my intersection, again, it's the issue, it's an inconvenience. So I don't know if I can get an alarm at the house to tell me what the changes are, but that is the issue. And to Ted's point, as a citizen, as the volume grows, you know, this just compounds the problem. But I think your recommendation to continually watch it, which is what the Traffic Committee has done historically, and the fact that you've, you've got some ideas as to how, what are the key triggers that we should watch, I think that's a good, that's a good recommendation. Okay. I say a hand. Mr. Watson, would you come up, please, so the folks at home can hear you? And we, you don't have to kneel down, you just can...
(laughing).
Yeah, just pick it up, it should come...
Jim Watson, 291 Rockland Street. Thanks for all your work. And I'm sort of out of touch, but what happened to the, calling, calling, telling your suggestion about the, somebody's about the oval roundabout that would accommodate all movements without actually a light? Did it not fit, or is it in there someplace?
That's in the first part of the, if I probably wasn't, it's either traffic control or circulation consideration. So that's, it has not been eliminated.
I think circulation consideration is an acronym for possible roundabout or other type of measures over there.
Okay, good. It's going to be difficult, but it sounds intriguing.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. That's, I think, Ted, two years ago, we took a ride down off of Route 3, and I'm trying to remember.
Exit 11, Route 3, very, very difficult intersection, one of the worst ones in the area. Mayflower and Route 14, Mayflower Road and Route 14. And the Town of Duxbury put a, with the state, worked on putting a roundabout there that has greatly reduced, greatly reduced accidents there. Again, every intersection's different and it also didn't involve a lot of land-taking. It was all within the scope of the layout that they had there, which makes those projects a little more easier. If the recommendation had come back for a roundabout here, that would be challenging for us because it would require quite a bit of land-taking. Land takings are always a little...
In a historic district.
In a historic district. And it's probably going to affect a few of the trees in that area, too. So it's not as simple as just plopping down a circle.
Right.
And paving it, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody have? Well, we thank you and we, I think, do we need a vote, Mr. Town Administrator, to accept the report?
Ordinarily, you don't take votes to accept the report, you just accept them.
Well, accept them. Okay. We'll take that as guidance. Well, I thank you all, Jim, and then the retired committee.
You're welcome. And thank you for the, for the opportunity to serve the town.
Thank you for leaving that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda is something that I just want to tee up for discussion with my colleagues. The role of Plymouth County Government is, and our relationship to it in the Town of Hingham has been something that has come up from time to time and then increasingly it has as budgets and other things get discussed. And in this, this week's issue of the Hingham Journal, there is an article on the front page called "Town and County," which kind of frames the discussion. So no decision has been made, number one. I think I want to emphasize that, one way or the other. There are ramifications into this decision, not only directly with the services that we have with Plymouth County, but also with the indirect relationship that we have with the Registry of Deeds, which is mostly controlled by the citizen activity directly, or with the Mayflower Health Group, which is ancillary to the town but run by the county treasurer, Tom O'Brien. But it does have political considerations and for the benefit of the public, they should know that there is an article that's sitting in the state legislature right now as to whether or not a charter should be established. And the implications for the town, if the charter vote should occur, which we have not been informed that it will or will not, could have serious financial impact for us. So that's part of the discussion. And we don't want to prejudge and answer, so I have thought that the, we need to quantify what the ramifications are and so that, what are the services they provide and what happens to those services if they go away? And the second question would be, are there services that the county is envisioning that they may want to undertake? And how does that fit with those services as we provide them today? And then the more important question for me continues to be, how do you make this happen? As the article said, 70% of the Commonwealth population does not have county government, but where we live, it does. So what we thought is we should put together a group of people who are, who are not biased in their opinion, or if they are, they would be offset by someone else with a different bias. I think I'm saying that right. I hope I am, anyway. But to get, to get an objective and two charges. One, what is the benefit and what are the costs for this? And the second charge is, how do we make it happen? So in that regard, I had a discussion as recently as this morning with Garrett Bradley. And Garrett, as you know, is, has expressed concern for the courthouse operation. And my colleague to my left here is a recipient of that courthouse experience on a regular basis. So how do we make that work? And it has implications for us, as we all know, in terms, if the courthouse in Hingham is shut down, then our police have to travel further to the Brockton Court, if that's the court that remains, and how that all works out. So there are a number of issues. And the most important is that while the charter vote remains in the legislature, we don't, and we, we don't have a gun to our head that says tonight, next week, or next month, we have to decide. At least, that's, that's the framing of the discussion at the moment. So we had thought that we would put together a group of citizens, and I've asked my colleagues to perhaps nominate some people, and to go off and work with both the county, as represented by Tom O'Brien from Plymouth County and others, and with Laura Burns and Carl Harris, who made a presentation to us a week or so ago on the discussion of what we, what we should do. Garrett put forth the name of someone who used to be the Deputy Register of Deeds at the county and a former Selectman of Hingham, Michael Holden. And he asked if we would consider his appointment to the, to this study group. And I said I would discuss it with both of you to see if that was agreeable to you. So I would, I would put forth his name as one person for the committee. A second name is somebody familiar to town. He served on the Government Study Committee and he has volunteered his effort to serve, and that is Scott Ford. So he would be another one. There are two other names that I've received, and I should say, there are probably a dozen names that have come forward. And one name I heard indirectly, well, I heard directly on this one person, then indirectly, I understand, he contacted one of my colleagues, and that's Jim Claypool, is a person. And Jim has extensive experience with the town. And another name that has been put forth is Jane Malmy, who, an attorney who has done many things for the town. Most recently, she chaired the 332nd anniversary of the old church. So, but Jane has extensive, period. So those are four names. There are others, I'm sure, but those are four names that have come to mind. So I, with this idea that we, there would be no deadline, that we'd answer two questions. Should we, should we or should we not stay in the county? And second, if we decide to leave, how do we do that? And what's the process? So I'll open it up to my colleagues for comment or discussion. And if there's any other names they'd like us to consider, I'd open it up for that as well. So, Irma?
I think these names are all very interesting. I think we'd like to think about them. I'd like to throw out Eva Marx's name. She is an amazing lady, very critical thinker. I need to chat with her. I'd also like to ask everybody who's listening if somebody is interested in pursuing this, because you never know who's out there. If they would please let us know so we can talk with you and see if you would like to join the group or have some consideration. So I'll turn that over to Paul, then through you.
Okay. Thank you.
I echo Irma's comments. I, I think that, I guess I have a question. How big do you envision this committee being?
Well, I mean, I have a...
Five to seven?
Five to seven. We don't need to make it a football team.
Okay.
But, but, you know, whatever we think we need. And the other thing, I will tell you, there are a number of other people, Phil Edmondson is one, and others, who have opinions and ideas that they'd like, you know, they don't want to serve, but they'd be happy to give input. So that would be what I would hope, to Irma's point, that we'd, you know, get input from people who have experience, both with the town and the county.
I think that that's a good combination to have for anybody sitting on the board. But I also think the users of the facilities, I think Scott Peterson is the former president of the... former president of the Plymouth County Bar. Might not be a bad.
Scott D., Scott D. is the
The tall one.
He's on the HDIC, yeah.
Scott's on Country Club.
Country Club, sorry. Thank you, Irma. Yeah, country.
If he has the time and the inclination. But again, just seems like a good group of people to kind of consider, and we're fortunate that we have the talent depth that we do. So when do you envision taking a vote on these names?
I would think in a couple of weeks. You know, we have a meeting, our next meeting, well, we have a meeting next Tuesday to hear the Special Education Subcommittee report, but that's with the school committee. But then our next meeting is the 17th.
So either that meeting or the first meeting in October.
October.
That's the first meeting in October. Let's do that, and let's, let's see if anybody listening tonight would like to join the group.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
I see Mr. Harris in the audience. Carl? Yeah, there you go. Could I ask you, do you have any idea where we stand on the Charter Commission vote? Maybe you could come up and educate us on
I think it's still in the committee. Plenty of time.
Could you come up, Carl? They can't hear you.
Sorry.
It's Carl Harris, who's the representative of Hingham and Hall.
He's our commissioner.
I believe the Charter Commission bill is still in the committee of municipalities and regional government, and it's plenty of time to be reported out in time to get on the ballot for 2014. I think they have to consider a lot of things, and certainly have to consider what they're asking for in the charter is like a 300% increase in funding coming to the Registry of Deeds. And if you think of that being approved by the legislature, I think the legislators in Norfolk and Bristol would rise up and want that to happen also for the counties of Bristol and Norfolk, if not even Dukes, which is Martha's Vineyard and Elizabeth Islands, but also Nantucket. Because they're all getting like, 11% comes to the county itself, like Plymouth, and 89% of the monies comes, when you sell your house, comes into the county. So that's a lot of money. I mean, it would come away, if you take the recent FY13 budget, and you take what the county got at the end of the year, which was like $600,000 above what they budgeted, and that's what's carrying the whole county, this whole structure exists on the, on the Registry of Deeds. But if you say that that is 11%, what it comes down to is that 20% more is almost $19 million. So what's going to happen with that $19 million? I think Tom O'Brien has said, has treasured, says the state government will never pass that, will never allow that. So there'll be some compromise, some done.
Okay, but you think, what I'm hearing you say is, we've got time before they vote, so it's timely for us to look at our position as to what the merits are.
Exactly, exactly.
I think
I think we should understand the whole situation.
Irma's proposing October 5th, is that agreeable to you?
It's perfectly fine.
Okay, that's good for me as well. So if you have interest in this activity, and I know there are, as I said, there are a number of people who've expressed it, that you would notify the town administrator of your, of your desire, and will bring it to us for advisement and discussion on the 5th of October. Okay?
Please, I think it's the 3rd.
Is it the 3rd?
Yeah.
Is it the 3rd? Thank you.
Is it?
Thank you, Carol. Keep getting my calendar right. So that's the 3rd of October. Okay. Very good. Any other comments or discussion? Okay. Mr. Alexiades, at my request, put together a, we need to at least initiate the discussion for goals and objectives for ourselves and for next year. So Ted, perhaps you could talk with us about the document you gave us this evening.
Sure. What I've given you is a copy of your goals and objectives from, for the preceding year, and that you hopefully can use this as a guide to begin determining a process for setting goals for your next year. Just a quick review, your initial goal, and the goal you rated as highest to focus on this year was the Aquarian Water Study. And as you know, that's ongoing. I think we've updated you significantly on that. The second goal was tax relief. We have adopted the proposals and are in place to begin to deploy them for fiscal '15, the budget cycle we're going to go, beginning to start in the next month or so. So I think that's on the track that we've really talked about. Support for the industrial park development and South Hingham Sewer District, wastewater sewer district to serve the industrial park. As you know, we've been working on this, and we have an agenda item to talk about development in general, and perhaps this is a goal that will be expanded upon. The ad hoc fields study committee, Irma's been working on that, and, you know, a lot of that change will occur with the creation of the new sports complex at the high school, and add a significant amount of, of field surface, which will need to be changed into, adopted into that plan. Asset management, we expect Betty Foley will be giving me something, hopefully by the end of September, as an overview of where we are, and we'll be updating the board in October on where we stand on that as we set into the budget cycle. So that's the five goals that you've had for this year. In the past, what you've done is each of you have come up with a number of goals, try to come together as a board as to which ones you want to pursue. So I would recommend that you begin going through that process, and, you know, certainly some of these would probably stay on, and, you know, get an idea of what you think a manageable amount of goals for the year are. And again, these are top priorities. It doesn't mean to say that we're not going to do other things besides these things come up in the middle of the year that we need to work on. We won't be handicapped by that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. My, and I'll open it up for discussion. I certainly think having a lot of goals just gets confusing. You know, three would be ideal, if we each had one. That's difficult, considering the nature of this, of what we have to deal with. But I would ask maybe if each of you had a couple that you'd like to put on the table, and, or three, maybe as a max, and then we could winnow it down after discussion. That would be a reasonable discussion. I'd like to just, maybe to Ted's point about, I know the asset management issue is something that's, that's ongoing. The, the South Hingham, as you mentioned, development, that, that has had some activity. I understand it was on the HDIC agenda. Aquarium came in and talked a little bit about that last evening. The Aquarian Water Study, I'd like to take a minute and just update you as of this afternoon discussion. I, you may have seen it in a couple of the papers, as the folks at home need to know, that last Friday afternoon, the Supreme Judicial Court elected not to hear the case for Hingham directly, but sent it to the Superior Court Business Litigation Session in Suffolk County. So that's, that's, that's a good decision on their part. Certainly why we would have preferred that they hear it directly. I understand their process, and it's rare that they would entertain accepting such a case. But the fact that they moved it to Suffolk County's Business Litigation Section is a good thing, and it's in the hands of that court at the moment. So we're happy with that, with that judgment on their part, and there obviously will be ongoing, ongoing issues and discussions that, when appropriate, we'll bring back to this board and to others as to what the next steps will be. So our attorney has not yet heard from them. We assume there will be a discussion with Aquarian's attorney and our attorney as they work out a joint schedule as to how this will be fielded. So I would think this goal will still, in my mind, stay on the agenda for this year. And by way of background, and for my edification of my colleagues and the folks at home, we have spent $146,000 of the $320,000 that was authorized, which means we have $174,000 left, which counsel advises me we should be adequate to get us through the upcoming period. So we'll stay focused on that. Tax relief is something that will, I believe, it's certainly important to me, and I know it is to my colleagues, but how that fits in with our other needs is something we have to see what the, what will be coming. And Ted advises me that the budget, the forecast side of this will be, will be ready sometime this, the end of this week, the beginning of next, for our review, and that, as you know, on the 17th of September, we'll be having a joint meeting with Personnel Board, I think will be there, as well as the Advisory Committee and come to
And the School Committee.
And the School Committee to come to some discussions as to what does the revenue forecast look like. So I would hope each of you get an opportunity to spend some time with Ted before that. I, I have set up a date for me to meet with the chairman of the advisory next Tuesday at 4:30 prior to the school meeting, so I'll see, get a sense of, if he and I can come to a meeting of the minds. And then, obviously, you'll have a chance, hopefully, to input into this, so that before we sit down on the 17th, we can, we can discuss that. So I'll open it up. Any other discussion points that you'd like to, that you all would like to make, Irma?
I think we'll wait and come back with some ideas. I do think tax relief needs to stay up there. However, we do that, because there's many ways to do tax relief.
That's right. Good point. That's an excellent point. Paul?
I agree with Irma on that as well, and I think that there's certainly room for creativity with certain zoning initiatives that may accomplish that as well. The third goal of last year, I think, should be a continuing one relative to the industrial park development and South Hingham business area. I'll be speaking to that shortly. But I do feel that that is something of critical importance to the town, both now and in the future.
Okay. It would seem to me that, Ted, if Betty's going to give us something on asset management and the status as to what this is, I know, important to Irma and to the rest of us. So it may be appropriate that we wait to hear from Betty on this one, and
I would recommend that you, the meeting of the 17th is going to be a fairly busy meeting, and you're going to be moving into other rooms, so it might not be the best environment for you to have a discussion amongst yourselves about goals. I would say you want to be geared up for the beginning of October, so maybe in the first two meetings in October, you talk about your goals and you set them, and so that when we start the budget, which I will give to you right before Thanksgiving, the budget and the goals have a sense of, you know, coordination.
Gee, that would be good. That, that would be good. Okay. Okay, any comments from the audience? Mr. Watson?
Sorry, I'm only
That's right. We want to get you exercised, Jim, so come on, come on up.
I just keep wondering how, I keep wondering how the court decides such a very, very technical question as evaluation of the water company. And I know in many cases, you hear references to a court-appointed master, you know, a very technical person who investigates, resolves, and advises the court. Was that person then somebody approved by both parties? Or is it the court's discretion who they get? Paul, could you explain that?
Well, that assumes that a master's necessary in this instance. And that's, that's a question that's resolved by the court, certainly not something that's decided on here.
Do the two parties have to accept the choice of the master, or is that what's the court?
No, there's, there's a decision that's got to be made before that, and that's to decide whether there's even a master that's necessary. And then the court's got to agree that there's a master, that there should be a master. But that, that is something that I don't think needs to be discussed in this venue, because it's far too premature. I don't even think there's been an answer filed on the pot of the water company at this point.
I'm just, I'm still thinking, with all this debate about time and evaluation, how does the judge alone figure that? Thanks.
I can, I can echo, share what, and echo what Paul said to some degree. There is a conference that has to happen at some point, and that's where the attorneys sit with the court.
Scott.
Well, no, I mean, just to lay out schedules and times, and what are the, what are the issues? You know, the, our Aquarian representative is in the room here tonight, and I can tell you, the fundamental question that we've been trying to answer is, in 2006, the Macquarie Corporation of Australia bought the water company. What did they pay? And then there's a formula that the 1879 statute says how that computation is derived, and that's where the disagreement is. They have one approach, we have another. And I think that that's why it's in the right place, I think, in the Business Litigation Section. Those are people familiar with the procedures for how to deal this, and then they can determine what resources, as I understand it, that they would use.
Fun being interesting.
Yeah, I mean, it is, it's an interesting case. And by the way, I think the research that we've done on this, every, every town that's gone through a water company, either, what do they say, deacquisition or acquisition and, or divesting of their ownership, there has, it's been done differently. And it's based on the different statutes and what they were, what they use. So that's why the lawyers are involved in this, in this case. Okay. Okay. So as I said, there'll be more, as soon as that schedule is worked out, I'm sure we'll, we'll, we'll advise the public of that. Are there any other questions on this? Okay. So the 5th, the 3rd, sorry, I keep saying the 5th. The 3rd of October would be the next time we could do this. Last, we've had some discussion about South Hingham and where that is headed. And as, as you know, we, this past year, with the purchase of the Avalon property up there, we changed the landscape a little bit. A couple of weeks ago, we've had discussion with the Bristol brothers, and while it's very early for them, they've expressed some interest, and they have work that they have to, that they've envisioned. The person who has been spearheading the South Hingham study issue has been Paul Healy. So I thought, Paul, maybe you'd like to update us on what your thinking is and what you think we might need to, to address that, that issue.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just by way of background, several years ago, the town approved a zoning bylaw change, a zoning change, actually, for the property that we now know is the Bristol property up in South Hingham. And that allowed for the potential for significant development of that area. And in my capacity as a planning board member over the years, I've encountered numerous projects up in South Hingham, whether it's the Derby Shops, or, you know, the Bone of Muscle, or Sirono, Blue Cross Blue Shield. And I, I firmly believe that this is a critical area of importance to the town's development. And when I was running for election, I stated that, because I just think that it's got great potential, but it's, it's not an easy figure. So what I thought would be helpful, because I think there's different groups, decisional bodies in town government that are, that are looking at this issue, and by that I mean, if there's a distinct project that comes in, the Planning Board of the ZBA will decide on that particular project. A few weeks ago, we had a presentation by our, our town engineer and a consultant with respect to the Derby Street Corridor. And we have wastewater treatment issues. And we have wastewater treatment issues. We have untapped, undeveloped land that we know very little about. We have Derby Shops. We have the former site of the contemplated Avalon project. So, we have a lot of moving parts, and I just thought that it would be a, it would be helpful if we had a small group of citizens with different areas of expertise and experience, take a look at this area generally, and not, not so much provide directions, but serve as an advisory tool to the different boards. And the Derby Street corridor is, is something that is ongoing presently, and it represents an ideal opportunity for this to come together. So, what I did was spoke to Mr. Alexiades about this, what I was thinking about and what I'd like to do. And then, I floated the idea by my colleagues, former colleagues on the Planning Board, got some input back from them, and it was suggested that perhaps we could work with the HDIC, which is a committee that's long been in existence in town here. And I spoke with Sue Sullivan, and she's the Chair of that committee, and floated the idea. And I'm talking with her now. And I, what I'm thinking about is suggesting for your consideration and hopeful approval is that we create a small committee within the HDIC that's tasked with looking at the, you know, the existing infrastructure and the needs of this particular area now, 10 years out, 15 years out, consider the different inputs that we need with respect to police and fire, sewer and water, traffic, things of that nature. And we have a group of people who have traffic engineer expertise, expertise in permitting, whether they sit on existing boards or have sat previously, serve as a volunteer basis, and come together with a report, suggestions for the permitting boards, for the Board of Selectmen, either the existing one or a future board as well, and just a working paper for something to work off of. And this would perhaps require reaching out to the state to get a sense as to what their plans are for Route 3, whether there's going to be a, whether there's ever going to be a two-to-three lane widening, you know, the issue of the bridge, and just things to tie in to what we want to do, what we can do, and what we should do. So, that was my, that was my thought.
Okay. You mentioned in your discussion other boards. I mean, the Planning Board obviously has a role, and my experience with them has been mostly on the approval side of projects, but I'm also advised that they can be active participants in the planning exercise as well. So, I would assume we'd ask Bill Ramsey as the Chair to maybe make somebody available to us. Is that what you would think of?
Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, the voters have seen the Planning Board in a proactive mode. Each year, a town meeting with respect to the zoning bylaw changes, initiatives, that it's advanced with regularity over the years in anticipation. For instance, the Planning Board sponsored the article that resulted in the rezoning of the Bristol property. We explained the rationale why after being persuaded by the landowner that it was in the town's best interest to do this. So, yes, the answer to that is clearly yes. It would be critically important to have someone from the Planning Board selected by them, presumably, participating in this process.
Are you thinking a small group? When you say small, five, six, you're thinking about it?
Chewing on it.
Okay.
I mean, I don't want to be heard in a large group necessarily, but I think there's some genuine interest on more than a few people in having something like this being put together.
And I would imagine, I would want to turn it over to Irma, but I would imagine that there's a lot of people who would have something to say. The residents, as we know, have a concern as well as interest. So, how we, how we would structure this so that that process could be enabled, that the various groups, ZBA and others, would be something we'd have to think about. But that's the concept you were working on. Irma?
I like Paul's idea. I think he's in the best position because of his background in planning to move forward with this. Last night was the first time I'd really seen a presentation with any meat on it about South Hingham. And I want to thank Aquarian for giving us that presentation. I thought that was very insightful. It was an excellent presentation. And now, I only have 50,000 questions. I really begets more questions, but it is an enormous undertaking. I think a small group like this is very good. I would lean more towards the technical people, as I guess I always do, because what I came away with last night, this is an enormous undertaking, that how, and Paul, maybe you could answer one question. How does this dovetail with Mary Savage Dunham's master plan, the big M, the big P? Because just last night, it finally sunk into me, the infrastructure work that has to be done, and it can't be managed by one person, by our town engineer who's got 20,000 other things to do. But it's not so much as here's a blank sheet of paper, let me lay out the most economic and the most feasible way of doing it. There's already stuff there, and there's already structures there. There's already constraints that we have to work with, whether it's zoning, whether it's working with the DEP, or who monitors the water, how much we can do and what we can do, as well as the whole concept of public safety and the infrastructure. So, it is, and it's not going to happen overnight. So, it's, how do you envision this group? Well, go answer the question first about the big M, the big P, the big master plan that Mary's doing.
Sure. Well, the master plan, as I understand it, and I, I left the board when it had its opening meetings, but there was a grant received, and it was essentially, the money is being used to hire a consultant to essentially update the existing master plan, which I believe was, I was on that committee, I think, in 2003, it came out. So, what it's, what the board's doing is looking at the existing master plan, figuring out what's obsolete and what needs to be updated, brought up to today's needs within the town. There have been smaller master plans within the town, specifically, I think, the Bearcove Park has one. You know, I'm not saying we're going to create a master plan here, and I don't want to suggest that, I'm advocating to supplant the authority of the ZBA or the Planning Board, or what the HDIC does as the town as a whole. I just think there has to be a narrower focus on this particular area because it, there's a lot, there's a lot of things going on up there.
Yes. One of the things I came away with that I'll throw out, when this thing really starts happening, we should think about going out and hiring a professional engineer to project manage this thing.
That, you know, it's, it's difficult to say what, what the recommendation will be or the findings, if you will. And I'm not sure whether it's, it's going to be something that can be done in six months to a year. I honestly can't answer that question.
Yeah. I found my interrupt, I, my understanding that the Bristol Brothers are in the early stages of their thinking on this, so we are faced with a problem to the question you raised earlier, Paul, about that corridor and the bridge. And I have a concern, as I expressed, about where does this fit in the state thinking so that we get financing? So, this is a big issue, and maybe that's, to Irma's point, maybe that's one of the, one of the things that the committee could come back with and quantify all of the activities and then say, is this bigger than a breadbox, in which case we need somebody outside to help us, or, and who, how do we pay for that? Since I always think about that.
Fair question.
And then, the other, the other question is to Irma's point, which is a good one. Who has the expertise to piece it all together so that, because you're crossing, there's residential impacts on this as well as commercial and industrial, and, as I said, governmental with the development aspect. So, what's, what would be the next step?
Can you write this up?
Yeah. If I could, in my conversations with Paul, the town has actually had a practice or had a, had a experience in approaching subjects in this, in this area. And the last area that we've done, I think, to some great success, was the harbor. The harbor was, you know, a lot of competing issues, a lot of ideas about what should happen down there, maybe 10 years ago, probably, in 10-year increments from time and eternity. But the most recent iteration was the need that there had to be some zoning changes, the Planning Board had to be involved, we had traffic issues, and so, the board developed a harbor development task force and, or harbor task force, where it drew from all of these different boards and committees, membership to get together. Because each committee, whether it's the Planning Board, or the zoning board, or the project engineer, the selectmen, HDIC, they all approach it from a slightly different perspective because of their charges. And so, bringing everybody to the table, put a lot of information on the table, you know, the success we've had at the harbor with the Red Eye Roaster and the modifications down there, or some of the other things that Irma was working on with, or was working on last year with the plan, all of that was based upon this work of this, this group. And so, I was thinking along those same lines, Paul, this would help, maybe lay a foundation so that we could address all of those committees. Right now, I'm sort of the person that the committee's come to periodically, or with Mary Savage Dunham, and I think we need a little bit more involvement across the board. It would be very helpful.
I, I think you're right on the money, Ted, and I just figured with, with my own experience, serving the town as a planning board member, I could parlay that into just kind of an additional step in this capacity. I certainly don't want to become like a super planner, but yet, some of this does require planning.
Right.
And I think, you know, we've got discreet decisional bodies working up there. We should all be on the same page. And I think some of the talent that would sit on this committee doesn't necessarily have to come from existing committees. There's some really talented people, some sitting in this room as we speak.
Gee, I know a whole group that just kind of got relieved by delivering a report.
So.
They've got nothing to do.
It's, it's one of those things. I mean, we're really fortunate that we have such talented people in town willing to give their talents.
Paul, can I ask one other question? Do you foresee reaching out to, because it is an enormous task, reaching out to, maybe outside the box here, to a person like a Rich Beal?
You know, I've, I've heard some names, and frankly, this, this is a discussion that involves development. So, I mean, yeah, I think you just have to use common sense in the conversations you have.
You know, there's, I think what we picked up last time, you know, we heard from our friends at, at the Plaza, that they, now that this land we've acquired is nearby, that they have thoughts. We know the Bristol Brothers have thoughts. I certainly know the people in Gardner Street area have not only thoughts but concerns, and there's almost a marketing study as to what are, that has to go first. And I would hope that this group would focus on the marketing side, what is doable, to the point Irma made. You know what the infrastructure is, but you don't know what you can do with it. And while Aquarian has already done some good things in working in cooperation with the town, that's based on what they know, and I know what we don't know. I mean, that's the issue you've got to get your arms around, and that's what makes it so complicated. And I see Mr. Costello is here, so I want to, he reminds me, he is concerned about that area and how it envisions that whole, on the south side of Derby Street. So, there are a lot of citizens' issues that have to be incorporated in this.
Right.
So, how we piece this is, is a question that you have to-
Well, I wanted to, you know, just approach the subject area gingerly because, you know, I know people take pride in the responsibility they have, and just make it very clear to anybody listening that this isn't trying to step on anybody's toes, it's, it's to assist and facilitate. That's it. I mean, just, just to make the end result for the town a better one. That's the goal.
I think, I think Irma's made a good suggestion to maybe write this up and put a structure to it.
I'll give you, I'll be prepared to give the board a couple of proposals for different committees, structures for your meeting. I would target the beginning of October.
Can we send, I guess we send thoughts through you to Paul?
As always, I talk to each of you and try to model my recommendations to some of the things you're looking for. No point in giving you something you don't want.
Sure. And I think the public as well, if they have comments or thoughts that-
Sure, of course.
Or concerns, we'd like to, we'd like to hear from them. Are there any questions from the audience? Any comments from anybody in the audience that'd like to add to the discussion? Okay. So, let's see, if we can do this the night of October 3rd, right after we rearrange the comet that's going to hit us that night, we're going to have all sorts of things that night. Maybe you'll think it's you and I as the one-
We have a busy schedule coming up.
Yeah, we do, but this is in the, let's just say, early October so that we can-
All right. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. We have some, some appointments to make. There was one we should have made, and somehow it fell through the cracks, and that was to the Historic District Commission. And if I could, there's a gentleman we had interviewed, if you have your vote list?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, got it right here. Do we, can I have a motion to appoint Mr.?
Do you want me to do it?
Yeah.
I make a motion to appoint Hans van der Luf to the Historic District Commission for a three-year term ending in 2016.
I'll second that with a comment. I spoke to Andrew Young about my desire to have what I call in the parlance a nut-and-bolt guy on that commission, somebody who swings a hammer for a living, because I've been up in front of the Historic Districts Commission on many occasions, and it just, it's really nice to have that. So, I, for future appointments, I would consider anybody's got that skill set, if they're at all interested, please apply. But nonetheless, having said that, I welcome Mr. De Luf, he's a neighbor, to the commission.
He's done an amazing job in the house that he lives in now.
That's what-
Oh, it's gorgeous.
That's what I'm told. Okay, so, that's a second. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I should announce that we do have another vacancy on the Historic District Committee to Paul's point. So, if we have someone with the skill set that he's bringing forth, that would be a good, that would be, we'd welcome to interview you. We have, we have other candidates who have put their names forth, but we do have a vacancy, and they are dealing at the moment with some critical issues, so they can use the extra pair of arms and legs, so thank you for that. Some months ago, we appointed Dennis King, Joe McCracken, and Declan Boland to the Noise Bylaw Committee, and I understand that you and I, I heard from a third person, that you and I heard of someone on the Recreation Commission who would like to join that committee, and her name is Vicky Donlin. So, we still, that would be four members on that committee. We envisioned five, so if there's any other applicants or other names that we'd want to put forth, so we can get that committee going before, they have a short time period they need, that the police, I met with the police chief today, and he is anxious for looking for some guidance on how we can manage noise within the town, the entire town of Hingham. So, it's good that we can get that committee rolling. So, Mr. Healy, if you would make the-
Sure. I know Vicky and had the pleasure of meeting her when she was running for her Rec Commission spot, and- spot. And she lives near the high school, so the ideal person for this. I'll move to appoint Vicki Donlin to the noise bylaw study committee.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I've known Vicki for a whole lot of years, and Vicki, we won't tell how many. She's actually perfect for this committee.
Oh, she is, and that's, that's well said. All right, there being no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The, some time ago, this board elected to revisit a question that we've always had to deal with, and it's timely as we get ready to do the budget, that we deal with the question of tax classification. And for the folks at home, as you may know, we have a tax rate that re, is, happens to be the same number, achieved in different ways, but we have a tax rate for commercial, residential, and industrial that, that has been the same. And the issue that has the, not only the assessors, but ourselves struggle with is, should we make any changes to it, and what's the implications? We have interviewed a number of people who ran for office, and I had a discussion with them, some who would like to become more familiar with the finances of the town. And I talked with Michael Shaughnessy of the Board of Assessors, and Michael said he didn't envision this would be a big undertaking, two or three meetings, but it would be something that we should quantify, and not only address it, but maybe come back and see if there are other solutions to this problem of where 84% of our tax revenue comes from the residents, and is there any other way to, to shift that that reflects equity and equitability with, with the other people who pay taxes to the town? So Ted tells me we've got a short time frame for this to...
Correct. You're going to have a tax classification hearing, you know, probably in November, and you know, sometime November, December time period. So this committee's going to have to look at this and get back to you within that, you know, very tight time period. So it's really a month, two-month committee.
And we had all agreed that Ben Burnham was somebody we'd like to see active in this, and Ben's agreed to serve. I talked with Ed Colbert, who was a planning board applicant, and Ed is an attorney, and he assures me that if we can make his schedule work, he will. So I would like to entertain the votes to...
Can I, can I ask a question, a couple of questions?
Sure, sure.
Rick Nowlan, shouldn't he be on this committee as well?
Both Rick and myself will be participating.
They'll be ex officio.
And then also, I did see the opening that just came about on historic districts.
Mm-hmm.
It is a short term, which I know that's what Ben was looking for. And to Paul's point of needing a nuts-and-bolts person, I've seen Ben Burnham's work, and it is, it is awesome. Both working on older things, older houses, things, houses, structures, and on new. And he, his skill level is amazing.
No question.
So would, would we consider asking him, would he like to be on historic districts versus this? Because he's not going to get much exposure to...
Well, we could, we could put him on both, but I think I'd like to have a discussion with him and just make sure that's...
Me too. That's why, so can we just hold his name back?
No, I'd like to put him on this. This is, I think...
He's not going to get very much exposure to the budgets at all.
No, he's going to understand how the taxes work. That's the, that's the issue that's important here.
Well, the first time I saw this was like at 4:00 today, but...
This has been on our agenda before.
No, the names, Bruce. I, I had not seen the names, and I'm perfectly happy with Ed Colbert, because I think the world of him, and I've worked with him before.
Okay. So, let's do the first vote to create the tax classification study committee.
Okay, I move we create a tax classification study committee.
So moved. And a second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then the three members?
Only if you're comfortable. I mean, I, I think he can do both easy, if he wants to.
Yeah, I think we can, I'll ask...
The next time, could we have just a little bit more time to look at this with names?
Sure. Okay.
All right, I'll move to appoint Ben Burnham, Ed Colbert, and Mike Shaughnessy to the tax classification committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we have some other votes. We have the, we have a vote on the Noonan property. Mr. Alexias, if you could...
Yeah, could you explain that a little bit?
Explain this one to us, it's a long vote.
Yeah, I bet he's been working on this with Susan Murphy.
Okay.
As, as you know, this acquisition was authorized by a town meeting with CPC funds, and it's been in process getting all the documents together. Susan sent me the documents this afternoon. There was a conservation restriction that was holding up the whole process because the state needed to review the conservation restriction. Even after having the state mark up the existing conservation restriction that's in front of you this evening, they do reserve the right to tweak it after it has been signed. So just...
So we get to sign it again?
It could be. And this, this is, again, it will be voted by the Conservation Commission on Monday evening, so you don't have another meeting in time to, to do this prior to the closing date, so...
And we know they're going to vote it, right?
They're very excited about acquiring this property.
Okay, all right. Irma, would you read that?
I make a motion that, subject to seller's performance of the terms of the purchase and sale agreement dated as of July 15, 2013, as amended, between Nancy A. Noonan as seller and the town of Hingham as buyer, for the acquisition authorized under Article 11 by the 2013 town meeting of certain land on Rockland Street, the Board of Selectmen approved the acceptance by the Conservation Commissioner of a deed of fee title to parcel A and a conservation restriction over parcel B, as more particularly described in said agreement, and that the board authorized the chairman to execute such additional documents as may be necessary and proper to consummate the acquisition of such interests by the town.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Town Administrator, Ted, could you tell us where we are on, before we take the next vote, on the North Street pole removal project and update the public on that, if you could?
Sure, I actually have a contract for you to sign, I take a vote to sign tonight. We have a budget of $70,000 remaining, and we had previously executed an agreement and sent a check to Verizon for that $70,000. Verizon came back to us a few months later, said they didn't cash the check, and they wanted $84,000. We, of course, said it's above our budget, and we weren't interested in that, and we wanted them to rework it. And they did actually go back and rework their plans and designs, and they asked us to do a, a, a series of pull strings for them, so that it would easy, be easier for them to move their, their wires through the area. They're the last phase of this project, and they've responded back with a lower cost of work at $63,608.06, and I'd ask your consideration to sign it. It's about $7,000 below our budget. Project engineers are extremely excited about having the final piece.
This is the final piece. All right. Any questions for my colleagues?
None.
Did I?
In the interest of full disclosure, Ms. Louder and I used to work for what is now the Verizon Corporation, but we are permitted by, by the town council's permission and by publicly disclosing that fact to vote on this.
And, based on the hassle that this has been, it shows how much influence Bruce and I have at Verizon.
Thank you.
So I wouldn't worry about it.
No. Like those poles, I still trying to get those poles down.
I'm telling you, if we don't get the lights on, I'm bringing the sign in, saying, let there be lights. But we are within a week or so, or within the next couple of weeks, the lights are going on.
Yeah, that's what I, is that true?
Yes.
Yeah.
I've talked to Roger, and Sue also talks to, talked to Roger.
Okay, I'll be there for the... You going to throw a switch?
We're going to do something. Break open a bottle of champagne, or something.
Okay. Mr. Healy, would you read the motion?
Sure, I'll move that we sign the letter of intent with Verizon, which allows Verizon to perform the work associated with the North Street pole removal project. This project has been negotiated, and the final cost of the work to be performed is
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Last time, we had a discussion about a dog policy for this building, and it was generic and general. And what I'd like to put forth, not for vote, but for consideration, is a draft which is in your folder, and maybe I'd ask the, I'd ask the town administrator to talk to town council to incorporate this. And Ted, maybe you could put this up on the screen?
Sure.
And then we'd ask the public to come on it over the next few weeks, let's say, next week and a half, to see if there's any concerns with it.
Sure, and we'll be posting this on the town's webpage, so people could read it at length. But essentially, what the policy does is it prohibits all animals from the building, the town hall building, with several exceptions. The first exception is service animals, and in accordance with the regulations that establish service animals, those would be prohibited, prohibited in the building. And animals that are attending a training program conducted by the Recreation Department, Recreation Commission, and again, stipulating that those animals are under the control of the owners during those period of times. And of course, a third exception, obviously canine dogs under the control of a law enforcement officer. And so those are the three exceptions council felt, you know, were, we had to advise them, of course, about the Recreation Commission's process or, or program of training dogs. So he added that as an exception.
Okay.
The other two are pretty standard exceptions.
You know, I, I, my research indicates that the federal government has such a policy, and so does the Commonwealth.
Correct.
And for a variety of reasons, nothing against dogs or their owners who try to, who train them, but that, there are people who may be allergic to dogs, or have a fear of dogs, or as we all know, dogs sometimes can turn.
Council wanted to stress that this is a policy about animals and not dogs, because there are a lot of other animals that...
Correct.
People who often, you know, enter the building with, you're not, not, not just dogs.
Does this mean you have to leave your boa constrictor at home?
Well, I wouldn't have one of those.
Just kidding. I have two requests.
But I won't be bringing any of my chickens in.
Oh, geez.
What about the pigs?
No, they don't go. They stay home where they belong.
And the bees.
And the bees.
Definitely the bees. Two requests. Could you send this to the Recreation Commission?
Sure.
And then secondly, there's nothing in here, and could you send this to Chief Poreno, said the animal control officer can take a look? Because occasionally Leslie does have animals in her office, they're in cages, they're not, but for whatever reason, and it's usually temporary before the owner picks them up, or she's transporting them somewhere. And I would hate for that to stop.
Of course.
But if we could just have those two groups...
Okay, and the other, Ted, when you're talking with the chief, would you, what's the penalty for violation of the, of the statute? He needs that guidance, and I, I just said I'd bring it to, and then, of course, we welcome comments from the public on this before we take it under consideration. The other issue I wanted to put up is Irma very nicely put out a chart last time about legal expenses, and I know we are, have, have been concerned about those. And Ted, if you can, I don't know if you have a clean copy with you, but you can use mine.
I don't.
Irma did some regression analysis on it, and the trend when you included, it prompted some research on my part to make sure, just that I understood what the numbers were. And I think the issue Irma was trying to raise was the question of, are legal expenses out of control, or are they in fact...
Trending in the wrong direction.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that's a, that is a good question. So what I asked Ted to do is to do some analysis for us, and what he came back with is a, the one blip on that chart that you can see, Bob, if you can focus on that for us, and on the...
I'll take another one.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you. If you can, can you get on that chart, Bob?
Yep.
Okay. Ted, if you could just point there, you look at the historical history that Irma displayed correctly, and that is, is a blip a couple of years ago, which in any regression analysis would, you know, hit your trend line and put it in a higher direction. The blip on that, as we all know, was the, was the Hershey House issue that we, that we dealt with a few years ago. And so that's where we booked it, as, as you explained it to me, and maybe you could give us a little more on that.
Sure. Due to the nature of how, how the Hershey House settlement came about, the only method to pay the settlement was through legal services budget. And so the advisory committee transferred a sum of money into the legal services budget simply to pay that settlement, which was $576,000, I want to say? Or $67,000? I don't have the exact number in my mind. And so, you know, if we were going to do an analysis of legal services to see what we're actually spending to hire attorneys to do the work, legal work of the town, we wouldn't include a settlement figure in there, because we would make, you know, bad decisions off of that if we thought that we were actually in a point in time where we thought we'd be spending $900,000 in legal services in one given year. We've never been close to that number prior, in any prior year, so that would give us bad information. So similar to the idea of pulling out, when you do analysis of large periods, you pull out your high and low, in this case, we just pull out bad information, or information that's not consistent with what the purpose of analyzing to see if we are, we are spending the appropriate amount of money. So I, I pulled that out for you in that...
Okay, and you have a chart on that? Do you have that chart with you?
Is this the one you're looking at?
Yeah, that's the one, yep. Yeah, if you could put that up. So if you pull that, that chart out, you see that this was an issue, and of course, my two colleagues weren't here at the time, but back in 2008, that's when we started to go in the, considerably in the wrong direction. And that's when we adopted the policy to make sure that legal expenses are monitored more closely with the help of advisory, and that the trend is, is under some degree of control. And there are some blips, as you see in the year 2011, which describe the, which describe what Ted just said, that the Hershey House was a, was a hit on us. I think the one thing about legal budgets that I've learned, we are engaged in a couple of court cases right now, you'll be updated on those, I'm told, in the next two weeks or so. They are unanticipated and unexpected, and they are of the criminal nature, so that's why we have lawyers to protect us. But I think Irma's right to bring up the issue of making sure that we monitor this, and to remind the folks, we introduced a program of every quarter reviewing all of our expenses, and those are public meetings that are open and publicized, so we, we would welcome, we would welcome you to, to attend those if you'd like. I think it is, I know folks are concerned about the legal budget, as are the lawyers who get paid. They are very sensitive to our position that they don't overexpend, and the introduction of what we now require before a legal dollar is spent is an estimate of expenses before we agree to spend them. So that helps us manage the, the numbers better than we, than we used to do years ago. So I'm pleased that the numbers confirm that we have to watch it carefully, and that is the, that is the purpose of this. So I wanted to just give you that analysis to reinforce, I think Irma was right to bring up the issue, but as, as I think we need to do, as we all agree here, that we'll manage this to the best we can, and if there are blips, we will know about them before the fact.
Bruce, put this one up too, because I took a longer view, which, the line, and when I did the regression, I did take out a chunk of the blip, but I left the blip in, which you can do.
Yeah.
So you're right with the, from 2008 to now, but I went back to what, 1997?
Yeah, I, I, I went in the CAFRA report, and I don't want to get, there's an issue, and I, I'm just looking for my notes on that. Yeah, here they are. The town budget since 2003 is up 52%. Legal, the debt budget, just for information, our debt budget is up about 16% over 10 years, using as the denominator year 2000 and... years, using as the denominator year 2003 and the numerator as 2012. The expense is driven, as we all know, by health care and other issues, but the legal budget is not moved as much. It's about, it's in concert with that. So it's, but it is something we have to watch, and I think that's a point well made. And I think we've, I just want the folks to be aware that we do pay attention to that, and that's the purpose of the quarterly meetings that we have, to make sure that we're on track, and that if there are exceptions, that we know about them before they occur. So with that comment, I'll open it up to, Irma, you wanted to say something about June 27?
If you want to do Ted first, or do you want me to do?
No, you can, you said you wanted to talk June 27.
Yes. I learned something. The meeting we had on June 27, a status report was given on Aquarian. Bruce and John Asher read prepared statements, and as in the past, I have always asked for copies of that. Beth Rockoff, Ben Burnham can tell you, they just bring them now because Irma always asks. So I asked that those be included in the minutes, so that instead of having to watch the TV again, you could easily go to that document. Here's my learning. Bruce told me to discuss it with town council, which I did, and in his opinion, someone reading from prepared, a document, from a prepared statement from a document, those are considered personal notes. So they are not considered a public document, as I had always thought they were. And I didn't get that answer until last week, or the last meeting. And I tried, yes, and I tried to put it into the minutes of the meeting, but Betty said no because I didn't verbally say it. They couldn't be included. So now I done it.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, you know, and since Aquarian is here, there are private notes that have been used by them and by us, and those notes are for the benefit of the speaker, and they're private until such time as they are put into the formal record, and they can read for them for guidance. So that is the rule that we've been advised on. So I thank you for making that.
No, that was news. I did not know that.
Okay. Paul, maybe you'd like to start off with reports?
Sure. I just want to pass on to the boaters of the community. I noticed that the Harbor Master forwarded on. I think if you're complying with the mooring regulations, you're all set, but if you're not, you better listen up. According to the town, a Hingham mooring regulation, section 4A1, "All moorings in Hingham waterways must be permitted and marked with the permit holder's last name or permit number. As of September 26, 2013, the Harbor Master Department may remove, at the owner's expense, unpermitted moorings and floats that do not comply with the regulation. If you have a mooring or float in the water without a permit, please check online for instructions to obtain a mooring permit at www.hingham-ma.gov/harbermaster." Just a friendly heads up, you know, if you're all set, fine. If you're not, get it fixed.
Quick.
Yeah. September 26 will be here before you know it. Just other information. I met with the rec. commission the other night. I hadn't been in that room since I took Jim in the seventh grade.
You do.
And it was not too good. It was hot in there. You know, we talked about the animal policy and heard their concerns, talked about some of the field's management issues. I asked the gentleman present to send me an email with some of the issues they were concerned about, see what we could do to address them, if anything, and just found the meeting generally very, very friendly. The only other thing I want to add is I read in the Journal, there was a fourth offense OUI arrest made by Justin Burns the other night. It's kind of scary to think somebody who's been locked up three times for drunk driving is still out there. So good for him, keeping the roadway safe. Appreciate that, Justin. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Irma?
Want to thank Sue Sullivan and the entire HDIC crew. That was a great meeting last night. I want to thank Aquarian for John Walsh and Roni for coming and giving us a very good presentation, which they're going to send us electronically so we can socialize it with other people, but it was very, very good. So thank you for that. And now comes a real thank you. We had a very serious boating accident about 3:00 on Labor Day, Monday. So you think you've gotten through the day, and there was a very serious boating accident involving some teenagers. So I want to thank the Hingham Police Department, the Harbor Masters, Neil Riley, and Ken Corson for their fine job, and especially for Lieutenant David Levinson, we all call him Levy, and Medic Two and Engine Two, who did the transport. And also, there were several, the young man was brought to the docks of the Yacht Club, and right in the Yacht Club at that time were several doctors and a nurse, from what I heard. So they gave on-the-spot treatment, but our first responders couldn't be better. So thank you to all three. We had all three, the Harbor Master, police, and fire. So thank you.
Good comment.
Good comment.
Thank you. They're always there for some, always there. Mr. Alexiadis?
I would just point out to the board, I know you have it in your file, but just so you can see it, be reminded of it, I signed two contracts this week, one for a Vermeer stump cutter for $28,500 and for a pump for Broad Cove Station in the amount of $24,750.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any... Ms. Holley, everything's okay? All right. Next Tuesday night at 7:30, this board will join with the school committee and others to hear the report on the Special Education Task Force.
A week from Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The 11th. 10th. 10th.
I thought you were talking about the advisory committee.
No, 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 no. This is on the, I just wanted to make folks aware of that. That's been a long subject that has been looked at for the last year. Laura Burns, Karen Johnson, and others have done some work on that, and it'll be public next Tuesday night. Our next meeting, as I mentioned, will be the 17th of September, where it'll be a joint meeting, and then we may have...
You'll be meeting first here. The advisory committee will start at 8:00 on this subject.
8:00, all right.
And so you'll have a chance to do your own agenda and then move into their room.
Okay, very, very good.
Is it going to be televised?
The advisory committee meeting probably will not be. They have not televised their meetings yet.
Would you...
Some of them are.
I'll discuss it with the chair and see if they're prepared.
Good point.
Actually, I'm sorry, no. The joint meeting is an executive session. It's for labor negotiations. Sorry.
That's right. Personnel board's going to be there.
It's the personnel board, and it's the opportunity for the selectmen advisory committee and school committee and personnel board, as we begin contract negotiations with all our unions, to have a chance to hear the town's financial picture and make an assessment of where they should be in their bargaining.
Which is why I mentioned earlier that we get a chance to sit with Ted before then.
But I will talk with the advisory committee chair about their plans for televising their meetings.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, we have an executive session to discuss labor negotiation strategy with the police and Department of Public Works. So I'll entertain that motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
I'll vote. Now I have to do a poll. Mr. Healy, aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Not to return to open session.
Not to return to open session. Thank you all. Have a safe, and kids, glad you're back at school.